Everybody, to tonight's meeting, let's get ready to get started. And let's start off with the standing. Mr. Vice President, Lusher is going to stand for the prayer and then we're going to do the pugilization of the flag.
Will you join me in prayer? Almighty and gracious God, we give you thanks for the blessings of peace in our community, both those who peaceably assemble and civilly engage, and for those sworn officers who dedicate their careers to keeping the peace. We give you thanks for the liberties of free speech and freedom of assembly, which we saw modeled this weekend on our Courthouse Square. We give you thanks, too, for the abundant natural and cultural resources of Talbot County, the water and the land, and the people of this place, black and white, native and immigrant, young and more experienced. Teach us to be good stewards of those resources as you have entrusted them to us. Turn our minds now to this stewardship as we contemplate the business before us, that we have the judgment to leave a cleaner Talbot County than the one we found. We ask all of this in your most blessed name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. Thank you, Mr. Vice President, for that prayer. Great. All right, let's get started tonight on the agenda. Counsel, the agenda is before you, on June 22nd before us. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
I would like to make one correction or deletion and remove the minutes from June 22nd.
Well, can I get to the... Okay, that's fine.
June 8th.
Okay, June 8th.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to remove that. Okay, that's great. So what we'll do now that we've changed that, Madam Secretary, can we go ahead and change the agenda? Do we need a vote?
Do we need a motion to move the agenda as amended?
Yep, as amended.
So move.
Second.
Madam Secretary, can you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Okay, so now the agenda has been amended. Madam Secretary, now that the agenda has been amended to the new agenda, do we need to call for another vote?
I don't believe so.
Okay, that's good. We're good. Okay, okay, let's move on then. Okay. All right, so the minutes, okay, we did the minutes, that's fine. The minutes of May 25th are before you. If there's any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes. Hearing none, the Chair moves that the minutes be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, let's move on to dispersments from June 15th to the 22nd. Counsel has had a chance to review the dispersments of the 15th and the 22nd. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? Dispersments are accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, now here's where we're going to do introduction of a number of resolutions. Counsel, you have the items on the agenda to introduce the legislation. Madam Secretary, could you please read the title of the resolution into the record, please? The first one, please.
A resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to revise Chapter 3 Amendment Procedures.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good evening, Mr. Clark, how are you?
Good evening.
Good, good. You want to go ahead and tell us a little bit about this resolution?
Yeah, very quickly for the counsel. This resolution is associated with changing the introduction date for the county council for comprehensive sewer plans. Currently, it's the last legislative day of December, March, and then June and September. This would move it to the first legislative day of those months. That would then provide us enough time for advertising for the planning commission.
Do I have a council member that wants to introduce this?
It would be all of us.
Yeah, Mr. President, I, just for clarity's sake, I ask, at staff request, I requested this item on the agenda, so I'm prepared to sponsor this and will be happy with any who will join me in it.
Okay, sounds good. Madam Secretary, could you please announce the resolution number to...
Well, if you just show a hands, who wants to introduce it?
Okay.
Right? Is that right?
Yep. But we only need one, right? Or we need them all? So it's by council?
Yeah, this is how we do it.
Okay.
That will be known as Resolution Number 304, and the public hearing will be held on Tuesday, July 27th at 6:30 PM.
Okay, that's good.
Want me to read the next one?
I was getting ready to say, you want to read the next one? That'd be great, into the record, please.
A resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to reclassify and remap certain real property located at 25154 St. Michael's Road, Maryland Route 33, St. Michael's, Maryland 21663, and shown on tax map 32 as parcel 164, Lot 1, from unprogrammed to S1 immediate priority status.
Counsel, I did receive an application from the property owner, and then we moved forward with the Office of Law to prepare the resolution for yours.
Okay, all right. All right, Counsel, do we show a hands of introduction?
So, Mr. Clark, let me ask a question. That one and the next two, they are currently on-site septic, right?
Correct, yes, all three.
And they'll have more discussion when we have a public hearing or whatever on it. Basically, these are just individual properties. It doesn't allow for any other expansion. They're right in line with the existing sewer line to connect to?
Yes, and all of them are improved lots with residential structures.
And, Mr. Clark, these are not, the way in which we're doing these, I know we received some criticism from the Public Works Advisory Board that this seems to be a haphazard pattern. Are we, we don't yet have a prioritized way of identifying where the failing septics are. I presume these are individual cases of them.
Right.
But in terms, in terms of staff effort on these, I presume, of course, the property owner will pay the entire cost of these.
Correct, correct.
But there's still going to be a staff focus and staff effort that must, for these to move forward.
And I would say all three of these properties are in a position that would be able to connect economically. So they're right off the lines that we have available in the roadways, so.
Counsel, okay? Okay. Madam Secretary, could you please give it a number and a date and time, please?
This will be known as Resolution Number 305, and the public hearing will be on Tuesday, July 27th at 6:30 PM.
Okay. All right, and if you don't mind reading the next one, Madam Secretary?
A resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to reclassify and remap certain real properties located at 1004 South Talbot Street, Maryland Route 33, St. Michael's, Maryland 21663, and shown on tax map 32 as parcel 148, and located at 1006 South Talbot Street, Maryland Route 33, St. Michael's, Maryland 21663, and shown on tax map 32 as parcel 75, from S3 future planned area for sewer service, a period of six to 10 years, to S1 immediate priority status.
We've received applications from both property owners, just for the counsel's information. The property owner, or these properties were classified as S3 future planning service back in 1992. So ultimately, these property owners are now moving forward to seeking S1 classification.
It's a little longer than the six to 10 years, huh?
Yes.
And for clarification, we don't need to first classify them S2. We can take them straight from S3 to S1.
Yes, yeah. We do that with unprogrammed.
We can say anytime, this is now the future.
Right.
We can now classify these as S1.
And we, and just so you know, for the counsel, we, you know, typically, we kind of bypass it when we use unprogrammed. If it goes unprogrammed to S1, we've kind of bypassed S3, S2.
Okay, Counsel, can I show a set of hands? What I introduce?
This will be known as Resolution Number 306, and the public hearing will be held on Tuesday, July 27th at 6:30 PM.
Okay. Okay, we have one more. Madam Secretary, if you don't mind doing the last one, that'd be great.
A resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to reclassify and remap certain real property located at 5570 Leeward Lane, Tillman, Maryland 21671, and shown on tax map 44 as parcel 35, Lot 9, from unprogrammed to S1 immediate priority status.
Okay.
Also, I'm sorry.
Same thing?
Yeah, we received an application from the property owner, and this is actually out on Tillman Island as part of the Region 5 wastewater system.
Mm-hmm, that sounds great. So, Counsel, can I see a set of hands? Who wants to introduce?
I'm sorry, I was listening.
That's okay. Just show a hands of that resolution.
Sorry.
Okay.
You, too, Mr. Pack?
Sure.
Okay.
John?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yep, absolutely, yep.
Ms. Morris called to my attention that these public hearings need to be on Tuesday, August 10th.
Oh, okay.
Since the planning commission won't be able to hear them until August.
Oh, okay, August 10th, okay.
On all of them.
On all of them, okay, all right. Thank you. No problem. Do you want to give us a number, a number, please?
Yes, this is Resolution Number 307, and again, the public hearing will be on Tuesday, August 10th at 6:30 PM.
Okay, that sounds great. We're rolling quite ahead here, so the public hearing's in about 15 minutes. Do we want, we'd like to go ahead and...
Go back to it?
Go to item number seven?
Yeah, all right, that's fine. We want to go to item number seven here, so that's, all right, eligible for vote. Madam Secretary, would you please read the first resolution into the record, if you don't mind?
Resolution Number 299.
Yep.
A resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to reclassify and remap real property owned by Talbot County, Maryland, located on St. Michael's Road, Maryland Route 33, Easton, Maryland 21601, and shown on Talbot County Tax Map Number 34, Grid 2, as parcel 11, from unprogrammed to S1 immediate priority status.
Okay, Counsel. You want to start with that, Mr. Pack?
Sure, Mr. Callahan.
Yeah, sure.
Being I'm the council's representative on the Public Works Advisory Board and working with Mr. Clark, I've had several discussions about Resolution 299. You've all received the memo from both the Planning Commission as well as the Public Works Advisory Board. You've all had conversations with Mr. Thomas, our county attorney, regarding the finding of the Planning Commission. Since the Planning Commission did not find 299 as consistent with the comprehensive plan, the county's comprehensive plan, I think it's only prudent, Mr. President, that we withdraw 299. I know procedurally, Mr. Thomas can speak to this as well, that each member who introduced must individually withdraw. So I would request especially that you call that poll for withdrawal of the 299. That's my approach and my opinion on it. I'll yield to Mr. Thomas for any further clarification.
Yes, I believe Councilmember Pack is correct, and as far as a withdrawal, there is precedent for a resolution being, particularly a water and sewer plan, that a resolution being withdrawn by the members that introduced it, because if the resolution hasn't been sponsored, then it cannot go forward.
Correct, okay. All right, Counsel, I'm going to go ahead and take a vote on what you want to do here. So, Mr. Pack?
Just a polling?
Oh, polling, I'm sorry. Polling, Mr. Pack?
I withdraw my support of Resolution 299 at this time, Mr. Callahan.
Okay.
I will also withdraw my support of Resolution 299.
Mr. DeVillio?
I will as well withdraw my...
Okay, and...
You're the last one.
So am I. Withdraw.
And for the public, for the public's sake, I'm not being asked because I was not a sponsor.
Correct.
Yeah, exactly. You're stoned, clearly.
Yeah, okay, all right. I appreciate that, Counsel. Okay, let's move on, okay. Madam Secretary, you want to go ahead and read into the record Resolution 300?
Resolution Number 300, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to reclassify and remap commercial real property located on Ocean Gateway and Marina Drive, Trap, Maryland 21673, and shown on Talbot County Tax Map Number 62 as parcels 13, 21, 42, 43, and 80, from unprogrammed to S1 immediate priority status, and to reclassify and remap residential real property located on Ocean Ferry Point Drive, Trap, Maryland 21673, and shown on Talbot County Tax Map Number 62 as parcels 1 through 19, from unprogrammed to S2, future planned sewer service in three to five years.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Clark, you want to come up here, tell us a little bit about this?
Sure thing. This is, Resolution 300 is associated with the Ferry Point area, where we actually have commercial properties as well as residential properties. In this case, what we, the resolution has been drafted to bring in the commercial properties as S1 immediate priority status for sewer service, with the residential properties being designated or classified as S2, future planned service within three to five years. We had several work sessions, I think, last year, or not maybe last year, but 2019, associated with looking at sewer into this area, and at the time of those work sessions with the county council, a lot of the residents that lived in the, that lived in the Ferry Point area were not really in favor of moving forward with sewer at that time. I think a lot of questions were raised by the citizens that were associated with costs and whatnot. So the, I guess the strategy here is to actually move forward with building the new treatment plant with, basically for the capital, or, I'm sorry, the commercial properties. And then at that point, once that's been done, we will then have the treatment plant available for the residential property owners, and we'll then have an idea of what those costs would be. So that would then give them an understanding of what it would cost to tie in. So that was the reasoning.
So if you just do the commercial, is that feasible for them? I mean, are they going to be able to handle the cost without residential property owners paying into the new plan?
I think the good news, the commercial property owners are probably going to pay a majority of the capacity for the treatment plant, because I think they're also looking for expansion capabilities for that treatment plant. Whereas I think when we're bringing in the residential property owners, I'm going to assume that's roughly about, let's say there's 20 of them, I think it's 19. At 100, let's say 125 gallons per day, you're probably running around 2,500 gallons per day for all residential properties. We're probably looking at a flow rate of about 15,000 gallons, so a great majority of that will be the commercial component.
So, what do we size in the MBI?
I believe that we are looking at between 10,000 to 15,000 gallons, so...
But if the commercials alone is going to do 15,000, why would we size it?
Well, I think it's, if I'm not mistaken, the total capacity was going to be about 15,000 gallons. So, and that would be in the residential and the commercial component. So it would probably be 2,500, let's say residential, and 12,500 for the commercial. With some, you know, there may be a little bit of expansion capabilities there.
And you can expand it later? So you don't want to build it too small, because of cost?
Yeah, yeah, we don't want to do that. It's very true. But I think at this point, we can modulize the system. We can order up, let's say, two 10,000 gallon per day units if necessary. But I think a majority of the components for the wastewater system will be installed if we had to go on, if we, let's say, got two treatment plants, you know, we could put them right, you know, buy one and then get the next one at a later date.
So all costs are borne by the commercial properties and at some point, the residential properties. But are there any grant funds included? Is there going to be some, it comes from the state or the feds on this?
This is, we are looking at that right now. With the commercial property owners, we are looking at both Bay Restoration Funds to assist, which would be from the state. But because of their businesses, they would only qualify for a 50% grant, if I'm not mistaken. I think it's 75%, but you have to prove you're a small business by securing a number from the state. If you're through rural development, they're very supportive of commercial projects, so we'd be looking at trying to get funding through rural development as well for the commercial components.
Ray, the EDU, we just made a doubt of use for the commercial. We have the hotel there. I'm assuming each one of those units have their own private facility. Are they just going to be resigned to what they currently have on that lot? If they wanted to go up and add a second floor with more units there? How are we foreseeing those EDUs to be used?
Right now, I think, you know, that we had, I guess the preliminary engineering report was looking at that with the commercial properties, with the capability of expanding. We will probably have subsequent meetings with the property owners. We currently have the design underway. So we'll probably sit down with those commercial property owners just to review with them their overall needs. So, yeah, if there is any changes, we can make those changes as part of the design.
Okay. Sounds good to me. You good, Mr. Pack?
Yeah, yes.
Ms. Price, you good?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Vice President?
So, I guess the, as drafted, this would have us reclassifying not just the commercial properties, but we're also reclassifying the residential properties right now.
Correct, yes.
Which, the recommendation of the Public Works Advisory Board is to not do that, that there's no need to do that. We can do that at any time. As we just saw in the earlier legislation this evening, we can take something from S3 directly to S1, immediate eligibility, or from unprogrammed, in this case, to S1. It doesn't have to go through the S2 classification in order to be given sewer service, or be made eligible for sewer service. So the Public Works Advisory Board, and the recommendation with the Planning Commission is to, is to strike that, and that second section, and to leave the residential properties for the present as unprogrammed.
The residential properties, the recommendation was to leave those residential properties unprogrammed, correct, based upon the Planning Commission as well as the Public Works Advisory Board?
I beg to differ, Mr., and Mrs. Slane is here as well, he can step up. The Planning Commission, that was not their recommendation. They advised, Counsel, to see the remarks of the Planning Commission, but it was not their recommendation to do that. They found that, as drafted, Resolution 300 was in line with the comprehensive plan. It was not their recommendation to take those lots and take them back to unprogrammed.
The sentence reads...
Or to leave them in unprogrammed.
The Planning Commission also requested that the county council pay particular attention to the recommendations presented by the PWAB. So while it met, I think they're saying that it met the comprehensive plan requirements, the seven requirements, but they're basically saying you might want to change that and not do the 19 residential properties. I think they couldn't find that it wasn't consistent, but at the same time, I think they want us to, they're saying, pay attention to it.
And during the Public Works Advisory Board meeting, one of the concerns that was raised was the concern that ultimately, with, I guess, Resolution 281 or Trap, the Trap service area was classified as S2. And ultimately, MDE made a decision, let's say 10, 12 years ago, to reclassify that S2 to S1 and W1. In this case, it's a little bit...
Without counting action?
Without any counting action.
By bypassing our procedure here.
Right, correct, correct. The Public Works Advisory Board during that meeting was concerned that MDE would do the same thing with the, with the S2 designation for these residential properties. The difference between Trap and the county is actually, in this case, the county's the controlling authority. So, you know, ultimately, they would have to come to us for the connection charges, whereas in Trap, they would go to Trap to get, you know, pay the connection charges and whatnot. So there's a big difference, you know, in the S2 classification. The other thing, you know, just for the counsel, by having it classified as S2 will assist me in talking to funding agencies, identifying that these are part of the overall sewer service area. So that's something to also, you know, as part of the funding considerations, is to look at the whole area to be served.
So what's the downside to letting the residential properties, go ahead, and also be reclassified? Why did the Public Works Advisory Committee, understanding that when you're looking at funding, I mean, they, they work with you.
Right.
So why did they then say they should leave it out?
They were very concerned that MDE would, over the passage of time, let's say five years, would reclassify that as S1.
But it doesn't mean we have to hook them up. It doesn't mean they have to hook up. They're just classified that way. So again, I'm asking, what's the downside? I get what MDE is doing, and they're usurping local control. We don't like that, when the state does that. But what's the downside? They can't force them to hook up, right?
They can't. The one thing I would say the downside is when you, when you do have an S1 classification, that ultimately, you, you know, if you have a problem with your septic system, MDE is going to require, basically, the Environmental Health Office to issue what they call an interim permit, so that ultimately, if this, if they're not going to be eligible for sewer service, they would have to then upgrade their septic system, and when sewer is available, they would be required to connect within one year.
Can we go backwards? If something is classified S1, can we say, no, we don't want it to be S1 anymore, we want it to go back to S3 unprogrammed?
We can, we can, the council can do that, yes.
But not once an MDE permit is issued?
I think the key is, is that when we're looking at doing the treatment plan, you know, they're part of the treatment plan. So the key would be, is, let's say, we've designed the plant, we've got them incorporated into this. There's got to be discussions, again, with both the residential and the commercial, commercial property owners, and a buy-in. But it, you know, let's say there's no buy-in, yes, you can always declassify.
And that wouldn't happen.
Would you be looking at obtaining funding for, obviously, if this passes, that you will be looking for funding for the plant that would serve the commercial property owners? But you would not immediately be looking for the funding for the residential property owners, even though it's an S2, because you would want to wait for them to see what the cost would be, given the, once it's built under operation?
We are, to your point, we are not going after, let's say, the collection system components for the residential property owners. So ultimately, that would be left under a different strategy in trying to get funding for that. So we would have to have either a pump system, put in for each house, and a force main that would then connect to the wastewater treatment plant. The treatment plant would be, would be available. So ultimately, it had the discharge permit, you'd have all the components that are necessary for the treatment plant. And if we needed to expand the plant, we could do so, you know, if that was the case. We may go ahead and build the whole plant, depending upon what available funding we have, so.
You know, the residents in the testimony here have asked us not to railroad them into this without...
But it doesn't railroad them into anything.
Well, they might not, they might beg to differ with you.
But we can go backwards. I mean, if, you know, I think what this does is...
Yeah, go ahead.
Let's just say, it allows Ray to go out and look for the funding, see how much he can get, because that ultimately could lower the cost to those residents. So if we don't put them in, then we might not get as much funding. So it might actually be making their case worse, that it could cost them more later. And again, if we can, we can always go backwards.
Right. And for the counsel, because another piece of the puzzle here is ultimately, in talking with residents, you know, afterwards, there, one of the things that we have is the current road that's there is actually a private road. So one of the things, it would take us a little more time in working with rural development, but we could do a full-blown project where we're actually upgrading, putting in the sewer system. As that road's being torn up, we're now going to replace that road, build to the county's standards, and ultimately, the county could take over that road. And that could receive more buy-in from all, you know, majority of the property owners. That was one of the, you know, right now, the current, the current private road, it does have issues with potholes and whatnot, and it's maintained by those property owners. So that was, you know, one we had...
That might be the carrot.
Right, that's a huge plus.
If I'm looking at this right, we're looking at 19 residential properties that were built between 30 to 35 years ago. I can't imagine those septics still working as originally intended, or as good as the new, best bat systems that we have. So we would need to take that into consideration as well, that we are cleaning up and making things safer by offering this option to them. Is that right?
Correct. And I think what we would probably find in that part of the county, a lot of the septic systems are probably penetrating the groundwater. So as the groundwater rises, the, let's say, the disposal area for that wastewater coming out of their house is starting, you know, if you've got water on top of you and the groundwater's rising on you, you don't have much land before it pops out of the ground. So, you know, so again, the other thing, you know, just for the counsel and the public, you know, a lot of times, the MDE will do what they call, or, I'm sorry, shoreline surveys to see if a, you know, there's failing septic systems. Well, usually what they'll do is they'll send somebody out from MDE, knock on your door, and ask you if your septic system's failing. I don't think people are going to respond to somebody from MDE and advise them that their septic system's failing. So, I mean, you know, there's, I think there's, you know, a lot of times, they're going to be reluctant to move forward with, you know, saying their septic system's failing, because now they're going to be in a position... because now they're going to be in a position of either having to pump and haul or do something to fix their septic system. So, this, this is kind of being proactive in some respects, of trying to get the sewer out there to help that. And then, we will find that, I think, you know, once the sewer's available, you know, that now, you don't have that groundwater issue. Let's say they're, you know, they're having to wash their clothes, you know, not as frequently as they would because the groundwater issue is rising on them. And usually that happens during heavy wet weather events. I'd say 2020 was pretty good wet weather, you know, so.
So do we need a motion to move it to a vote?
We do.
Okay, well, then I would make a motion to move-
Mr. Swimit?
Yes?
Mr. DeVillio, are you done?
Yes.
You are?
Okay, next man.
I'll make a motion to move Resolution 300 to a vote.
Uh-huh. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, could you please call it a roll?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Nay.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right. Okay. So, it's, it's a little bit past 6:30, so, Madam Secretary, let's, let's get ready to do this last resolution, if you could, 301.
Just to a vote, so we know-
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay. Madam Secretary?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVillio?
What am I voting with?
Whether to approve.
Right, the other vote was just to move it to the vote, and now we're voting.
I, I'm sorry, aye.
Right.
Mr. Lusher?
Nay.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay. Madam Secretary, could you do 301 resolution, please, and do the record?
Resolution number 301, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to approve a capital project for the improvements associated with the wastewater treatment system on Rustling Oaks Drive, Y Mills, Maryland, shown on Talbot County Tax Map 1, Grid 23 as Parcel 98.
And this, this resolution, council, is for the Preserve Y Mills. They have a failed septic, or, I'm sorry, a failed wastewater system. It was an old RBC unit put in back in 2004, 2005. This, this resolution is establishing a capital project that when we would amend the wastewater sewer plan to replace that system, that would then give me the ability to go to MDE and start the process of trying to secure Bay Restoration Funds to help those residents in the replacement. The Public Works Advisory Board did note that, you know, they requested that this be tabled at their, their, at their meeting, and I think part of it was the concern that they wanted to have some kind of an agreement. And I think the Office of Law has prepared a memorandum of understanding for the Homeowners Association that identifies that they would then be responsible for paying the county back. I believe it was $18,000. So there is a MOU that was drafted and ready to go.
Council, what you're alluding to is for the PER?
That is for the PER, yes, sir. I apologize.
And, just for, for clarity, Mr. Callahan, if this passes, this basically just gives Mr. Clark the ability to move this project forward. It has to be in the, it has to be in our capital queue, for us to do anything. So this just puts us in the capital queue. We're not spending any money on it. We don't, we don't have that, that legislation to do that as of yet. But, you know, we're still waiting for the PER to come back, so we know exactly what we're dealing with. So this doesn't spend any money other than the $18,000 he alluded to, which is by agree to our front for the home owner for the PER, which should be coming back. Any idea when that's coming back?
We, we have not, we are in the process. We have, we have the contract for that PER, so he was to-
What's going on, Rob?
We, we are, yes, sir, we are. I think at this point in time, we still need to sit down with the memorandum of understanding, get the homeowners association-
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Pack. Ms., Ms. Price, you good?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Vice President? Mr. Clark, the, could you perhaps go into a little bit of explanation about the Public Works Advisory Board recommendation? And specifically, the point about the concern that the county should not allow any more building of residential structures or improvements to houses that would impact the wastewater treatment plant until the issues at the wastewater treatment plant have been resolved? Are we issuing permits for construction, for new construction here, so the problem could be made worse before this is?
Yes. Right, that is, that decision, unfortunately, is a decision that has to be made by the environmental department, the environment, that then has to be passed down to the Environmental Health Office. At this point in time, the, MDE has not taken any action, enforcement action, on this facility.
Does the county have any choice in issuing permits?
I, I, that's a, that's a legal question. I, you know, at this point in time, I-
The final answer, oh, yeah.
And I've heard from members of that neighborhood that permits have been held up.
Okay. So I, at this point, I mean, all I can say from my perspective is that, you know, MDE, to my point, has not, has deferred, at this point in time, any enforcement action. So there's really no enforcement action has been taken.
Can that be added to the MOU? That until this thing is planned, that they, that the homeowners association or whatever?
I think the problem we run into is the homeowners, you've got builders and homeowners associations, so I think the builders would be applying for the building permits. And I don't know if the homeowners association would have the ability to control that.
Ms. Salinas, you, from, from, Zanini, you want to, you, would you like to go ahead and comment on this, please?
Sure. Council members, when a building permit comes in for new construction on an approved lot in that community, it automatically gets referred to Environmental Health. So if it is going to be held, it's going to be held up from that office. And we're going to review it for other things, but Environmental Health is going to pay particular attention to the, the issue that's happening there now.
And when they see what's out there, they're not going to approve it, probably, right?
They've been holding it, I don't know.
Yeah. My guess is they're certainly going to call it into question. We don't know if they've held up previous permits. You know, it's something I can find out for council, but my guess is it'll, it'll come up.
Well, MDE is still allowing them to discharge, to receive and discharge and to spray from that plant. So, we're not involved in that. That's, that's at the state level. I think it's going to be kind of really hard for us. Our limitations underneath the article, read them, just, just do a blank, the use article that we have with, with Y, Y Mills, Preserve Y Mills, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Just do a blank in the name of that article.
Thank you. I did.
I was passing on to you. Our, our limitations regarding, regarding the funds that they've collected in, we have very, very limited, as far as scope, as far as what we can demand on that, on that facility-
Right.
-under the article and the restricted covenants.
Covenant, yeah.
Thank you very much, thank you. That's why we hired you. So, I mean, we're very limited in our scope, is what I'm trying to say, under that article. So we can't ban them from, from building new homes, and MDE is going to approve it, you know.
Well, just for the public's reminder, Environmental Health is not us. I mean, people think, oh, it's held up in Talbot County permits and all that, and it's like Environmental Health, we have no say in that. They do live in our building, but we don't tell them what to do. But it's still a question if you've got a failing system that is going to be tough, probably, to get approved.
Now, we have asked them not to, Mr., Mr. Stamp, not to draw down any more funds out of that account, correct?
Can you restate your question?
I'm sorry, I know you had to backtrack. We did ask them not to draw down any more money out of the account that they have.
Correct.
The account that they have to serve the, the plant. They're supposed to be seeking councils or the counties, or at least notifying the county if they need to draw money out of that, that account.
I believe that's correct.
And they've been drawing money out of that account, they paid for the repairs. And I think there was a balance left in it. That article speaks to, they're supposed to speak to us before they withdraw money out of that account. We asked them not to do that until we've got this PER in place.
Right.
And that's in addition to a close relationship between our county engineer and the situation as far as reporting certain measurements and what happened.
I will say, the homeowners president for the, for the Preserve Y Mills is in communication with me via email and whatnot. So, to your point, they are not spending their funds, for their financial funds, at this point in time. What they are doing, they are spending for the contract operations, which is their monthly fee that they do assess for all the users there, yes.
And how many improved properties are there, and how many are available to be built on?
I believe there's 67. I believe 54 have been developed. So there's like maybe 13 additional lots that could be built upon.
Okay, council, we're ready.
One further question for Mr. Clark. And I recall that you had an answer for the Public Works Advisory Board, but I think it should be addressed here before council, which is, the Public Works Advisory Board asked about the sequencing of either granting this S1 status through this resolution before the preliminary engineering report. And I recall you, you had addressed the funding streams on this, and could you please do that for, for us, to remind us?
Okay, the, well, I think in this case, what we would have to do is, once this wastewater sewer plan's amended, we would then have the mechanism, we'll forward that up to MDE. MDE will then begin their process of review. Once they're, that's under review, I'll probably be contacting MDE related to the utilization of Bay Restoration Funds. And at that point, we'll be, you know, we'll be hopefully having the PER underway and then develop. Once that PER's been completed, which I would have hoped would be probably by, let's say, September, October, maybe November, at that point, we would then utilize that PER, then submit that to the MDE. And then the funding component for MDE is if we go through another funding source, which that is due on Jan, the end of January, the, the last day of January is the applications that are due through the SRF, if we have to go that route.
And, and I'm sorry, I misspoke. They are already S1, they already have sewers-
That is correct, that is correct.
-because they have a failed system.
Yes.
A failed system that is still operating.
Correct.
And thus, the public health emergency. But your feeling is that, that you need this approval in order to apply for the, the funding to, to move this along, not waiting for the preliminary engineering report?
Correct. And part, part of that is that, you know, one is the, whenever we seek funding, especially through their application processes at the end of January, the wastewater sewer plan must be amended. It has to show that capital project. So by having, we can now check that box off with our application that we can submit to MDE. The other component that helps as part of the ranking process is the failure. When you have a failed system, that also elevates your priority for funding through MDE as well.
So, in essence, by passing this now, not passing this now may not preclude us from getting the funding, but it may increase our priority in, in, in receiving that state funding and thus, the, thus moving us toward addressing this urgent problem more, more quickly? I, I, I don't mean to put words in your mouth.
No, no, I think, I think we've, I've had conversations with representatives of MDE. We were talking about trying to do this last year, to try and have the wastewater sewer plan amended last year. So this is, you know, through those discussions, you know, this would be a time to get it done. Then we can try and move forward as quickly as possible. The one question that's going to be a big question for us is now going to be the available funds that we would have through our septic system program may not be enough to cover the cost of this. So we may have to seek additional funding through the state. Currently, the county receives, let's say, 800, we've received $808,000 for the septic system program. We can utilize some of those funds for connecting houses, but if this project's $500,000, then we're not going to have a lot of money to basically upgrade septic systems. So I anticipate we'll be working with the state very closely to try and secure additional funds to try and move this back.
When you mean connected house, you mean the new ones?
These are actually, I'm sorry, the, the, when, when, we're upgrading septic systems through the bay-
But not out there?
Not out there, no, sir, I'm sorry, not out there. This is basically-
You're talking two different things.
Yes. We, we receive, we received $808,000 in the Bay Restoration Fund allocation. If we were to utilize part of that allocation, or let's say $500,000 to cover the cost of this treatment plant, that would now only mean that we have $308,000 available for upgrading individual septic systems as they come through for individual houses outside of the Preserve Y Mills.
Okay.
All right. Counsel, okay. So, Madam Secretary, is there a motion and a second to enact the legislation that's proposed?
So, I'll, I'll make a motion to move Resolution 301 to a vote.
Okay.
I'll second.
Madam Secretary, could you call the roll?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right.
Okay, now, Madam Secretary, we've moved it to a vote, so let's move it to another vote, to, to pass it. Is there a motion and?
You already had the motion, now we just call the vote.
Okay, call the vote.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right.
Okay. Yep. All right. All right, so let's, council, and, and let's, let's move to the public hearing. Madam Secretary, could you please read the resolution into the record, please, 303?
Resolution number 303, a resolution to adopt the 2020-2030 Comprehensive Solid Waste Management Plan for Talbot County, Maryland.
Okay. So, now, you will take care of the clock if somebody says something, we're going to the public hearing. So, I guess what I'll do is I'll-
Do you want to have any overview of this first?
Sure.
I'm here.
We probably should.
You are. You haven't gotten up yet.
Basically, council, every 10 years, the county is required to update their solid waste management plan. Ultimately, this plan is from the planning period of 2020 to 2030. We basically submitted the plan to MDE back in March for their review, initial review. At that point, once they, we got and received their comments on that initial review, we then forwarded to the, you know, made the changes to the plan, and then forwarded to the Planning Commission, as well as the Public Works Advisory Board, and the county council. Ultimately, the plan, we had meetings with the Planning Commission, the review comments that they had, received those comments, and then updated the plan based upon, you know, some suggestions they had, I think, back at their May meeting. And then ultimately, on June 2nd, the Planning Commission basically reviewed, I guess, Resolution 303, and ultimately, found that Resolution 303 was consistent with the comp plan, and ultimately voted, I think, it was via a 5 to 0 vote on that consistency.
Okay.
And then at the, also on June 2nd, the Public Works Advisory Board also reviewed 303, and they, we only had four members at that meeting, but they also moved forward with the recommendation advising the county council to adopt Resolution 303 via a 4 to 0 vote.
Thank you, Mr. Clark, I appreciate it. Counsel?
Public hearing.
Okay. All right, so now I will open the public hearing on 303. If you wish to comment on 303, please provide your name and where you live. You'll have three minutes individually. If you're representing somebody, we'll give you five minutes on the, and let us know what organization you're at. So, I'm going to start over here, behind Ray, in the, in the last row.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. And I'm going to start here on my right. Anybody want to comment on 303? Okay. Resolution 303 is eligible for vote on Tuesday, July 13th.
Correct, unless a council member wishes to. Okay.
So, so.
Go ahead, Mr. Frank.
No, I was, since I'm introducing motions to take a vote, I would introduce a, a motion, make a motion to move Resolution 303 for a vote so that we can not hold this up any longer.
Yes.
I'll second that, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.[1695.07]
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right. Okay. So now we'll call the vote. Madam Secretary?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right. Okay. Okay, 303, 303 passed. Okay. Okay. That was, that was the only thing on the public hearing tonight. Appreciate everybody's patience on that. Okay, the next thing on, on the agenda is a presentation of the Talbot County Annual Diversity Training Report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Counsel President.
Yes.
I have David Edwards, our HR Director, coming forward as well.
Uh huh.
Please to have David join us on our senior management team. He has a lot of, a wealth of experience in specifically this area of HR, and that is ensuring that we have diversity in the workplace, and much of our work in this area will fall within his area of responsibility. So last year, May, May 25th of 2020, the council passed an administrative resolution directing the county manager to draft a diversity training report, and then to report annually on that. And that's what we're here tonight to do. I'm going to hand it over to David, ask him to go over some of the things that we've done over the past year, and focus on some of the things that we look at, look, or we'll be doing in the future in this area. So David, could you?
Welcome, Mr. Edwards.
Thank you for having me again.
Yeah, no problem.
So thanks, Clay. Hello, everyone. I believe the council has received a copy of the annual diversity training report. I've been asked to highlight a few items from the report that will demonstrate Talbot County's commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion from the past year, and then talk a little bit about moving forward. Since the initial diversity report, we have expanded our advertising to fill position vacancies with the Chesapeake Multicultural Resource Center, and we send a listing of our open positions to the local chapter of the NAACP. On the training side, the Talbot County Sheriff's Department participated in a virtual diversity in the workplace seminar. This was a mandatory training for them, offered, and it was offered by the Police One Academy. Additionally, members of the Talbot County Government Leadership Team partnered with Talbot Family Network last year to participate in a two-day workshop titled "Dismantling Racism." The workshop was hosted by a group called Racial Equity Institute. So moving forward, we're going to leverage some of my experience in this area from other organizations where I have worked. We're going to, through the benchmarking process, look at what other organizations are doing, start developing ideas, creating a sense of systematic process and some metrics around diversity, make it a, a, a process where we're routinely looking at information around this. And I think that is, that is a way that we can kind of create a baseline of how we're doing against some of, as I mentioned, the concept of benchmarking, how we're doing against what others are, other organizations are doing, other government entities are doing. So I think one of the things that Clay and I spoke about yesterday, which I thought was really insightful on his part, was that we really want to get employees involved in this process as well. So this isn't a, an HR-driven process, this isn't a top-down process, this is kind of a, the work around diversity, equity, inclusion is everybody's process. And so we want to get employees involved, I have experience with doing that, and other organizations will present some ideas about perhaps having some committees around this, et cetera. But what are some of the employee ideas around what we can do? And since Talbot County is an employer that, that does value diversity, we are continuing to ramp up our methods to increase the diversity of our applicants, the applications that we get in for our positions. So we're going to look at some things, like do more with social networking platforms that, that other organizations might do by reaching out to diverse associations and clubs. And we do that through social networking as one of the major ways to do that. On the training side, the county has entered into a contract with Cantola Learning Management Systems. This is a new e-learning platform that we have purchased, and I have with my team looked at some of the content, and there are four, in my mind, really good offerings around, they're interactive as well. It's not just coming to a session and listening, you, you interact in this, in this methodology. So really good trainings around diversity, equity, and inclusion. I think it's going to set the tone for the employees and management to better, I think one of the main things to think about is how others can experience, how others experience the workplace, understanding that not everybody experiences it the same way. And I think we kind of get in a headset that we're all feeling the same thing of what we're doing in, at the workplace, but it's, it's really actually not the way it is. These mand, these trainings will be mandatory, they'll be for full-time and part-time employees, and they're going to be part of a new orientation program that we are developing, where new employees are going to get a real sense of what our culture is right from the beginning. And then a final highlight is that the Chesapeake Multicultural Response Center has offered us the opportunity to participate in a cultural competence workshop. And some initial ideas that I have around that, well, maybe we put together a diversity, equity, inclusion committee, a group which is employee representatives from different levels in the organization, and maybe as a, as a motivational aspect, or as a carrot, we offer this training to them first, and they go out and get a sense of what it's about, and can come back and socialize some of these concepts, because again, it's back to the grassroots level with employees. I think that's where you're successful. That was my brief highlight, so I appreciate it.
So counsel, as you can see, you have staff just working diligently on your mandate as outlined in the administrative resolution. Certainly take it seriously and want to make sure that we, you know, we embrace this and immerse our workforce in the principles around it.
Thank you, Mr. Stan, thank you, Mr. Edwards.
Mr. Edwards, good. The Cantola LMS, is that a virtual learning platform where you're given an hour where you log on, that other people who are logging with you to have that training experience?
Yeah, so it's, from what I've seen so far, its, its core is what is described as an e-learning. So you can, you can sit at your computer, you can look at the software, but it also has a really good intuitive kind of, you can do some things on it, along your question, which I think is interactive. So people can be on the other end, you can have a moderator, you can have a presenter, you can have groups, and then everyone in the group is on, so it has that component to it.
Okay.
And to be fair, Councilmember Pack, this is a tool that goes well beyond this one issue with regard to training, and it's something that we've embarked upon, and, and so we, we are in an evaluation period to see just how well that will do. And certainly, our hopes are high that it will be, you know, it will do a great job. If not, we'll, we'll adjust.
And Queen Anne's currently using them as well?
Yeah, yes.
Has DES been recertified already? I know there was, I saw that DES hadn't, had not had any additional training since the first training with DES employees.
I believe that is the case. It was related to.
So DES has not had another specific workshop for that workforce. However, upon their recertification as EMTs and paramedics, there is a component that does address diversity. Now, that being said, there is always more to be done, and we do want to get that work, that part of our workforce, as well as others, through a program.
Mrs. Price?
Good, thank you. Thank you for the report, very well done.
Mr. Vice President?
I want to add my thanks and, and my, my compliments on the, on the employee-driven approach, and I'll be interested in learning about how, how that goes forward.
Yeah, it can be a really.
Trust the authenticity of that type of approach.
Yeah. It can be a really cool process that engages people and motivates people to get into it.
Mr. DeVio?
I'm all for learning, so if you ever put anything together for department heads, I'd love to be included.
That's great.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. One second.
Okay.
You've been here three, four weeks, and, and I'm very, very blessed, we are, as a body here, to have you here.
Oh, thank you so much.
You've done a great job, you're excellent, we're, we're very happy to have your experience. And this is what it's all about, to have your experience and bring new ideas to us.
Yep.
So we, we really appreciate it, and we're, we're really happy to have you.
And I want to say that the environment, thank you. The environment so far has been very conducive to that, from not only your, your group, but also the, the leaders are really kind of setting me loose, so.
That's good, that's good. Well, we're excited to have you.
One last thing, Mr. Edwards, before you do jump off. Council also passed a diversity statement that each employee and also member of our boards and commission had to sign, that they've read it, they understood, and had to be placed within their jacket. I, I don't see, have you, have you had a chance to audit every, each department to see if that's been done?
It's a, it's a great point, I have not, and I will, I will do that.
Could you report back on this?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, yep. Thank you, Mr. Edwards, appreciate it.
That brings us to the county manager report.
Yes, sir.
Council President, thank you.
Uh huh.
Under board and committee appointments this evening, the first item is the airport board, and I'm requesting the reappointment of Keith Griffin to that board.
Can I make a motion? Make that motion?
Second.
Madam Secretary?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right.
So the next item, bear with me here, this is regarding the Board of Education Redistricting Commission. The council has to appoint this commission, and so we, we received names from the Democratic Central Committee, Republican Central Committee, and then there's an at-large member. County Council is to appoint four individuals from each of those bodies, four from the Republican side, four from the Democratic side, and then one at large. And so the names that I'm going to be providing you for your consideration to appointment to the Board of Education Redistricting Commission. The first will be the Democratic Central Committee. The names that are recommended for your consideration are Megan Berman, Ed Delaney, Keisha Hayth, and Maxwell McColl. On the Republican Central Committee side, the names that are being recommended are Carla Wieland Cherry, Janet Greenhawk, Susan Brooker, and Jennifer Williams. And the at-large member on the commission, the name being recommended or the individual is Mr. Zach Smith. These names are being submitted for your consideration to serve on the Board of Education Redistricting Commission.
If I may, just one question. What, what staff or department head will be chairing this commission as they go through their work? Was it Mr. Salinas, or?
No.
You were, you were in eye shot, Miguel, that's why I do you.
Jared Cook.
I'm sorry, Justice.
It would be the election director, Jared Cook.
Jared Cook, okay.
And Mark Cahoon.
So Jared, thank you. Jared Cook.
Thank you, Justice. So we'll need a, you know, we'll need a, an action from counsel on that.
Yeah, does anybody have any, any, any other thing to add? Okay, do I have a, a motion in a second?
I'll make the motion that we accept the names.
Okay.
Ms. Red?
Second.
Okay, Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right.
Thank you, counsel. The next item we have, I want to recognize that your, your finance director, Joy Nagle, is with us tonight, and I'm not going to call her out to speak necessarily, but she, she is here, and she's doing well.
Great, that's great.
And I just want to report that. The first item of business we have relates to an area under her responsibility. This is a request of the Talbot County Board of Education for approval of the FY 2022 Talbot County Public School Budget by Category, as approved by Talbot County Board of Education. As you read in your agenda packet, requesting council approval for Talbot County Public Schools FY 22 Budget by Category to be submitted to the Maryland State Department of Education. I need your actions to support the submission to the Maryland State Department of Education.
Okay, counsel, do, any, any questions? Okay, do I have a, a motion in a second?
I'll, I'll move for the approval.
Okay. A second?
Second.
Okay, Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right. The next item I have is another request from the Talbot County Board of Education for the appointment of Dr. Helga Einhorn as the Acting Implementation Coordinator for the Talbot County Blueprint for Maryland's Future, as approved by the Talbot County Board of Education. As you read in your agenda packet, requesting council approval to appoint Dr. Helga Einhorn as the Acting Implementation Coordinator for Talbot County to implement the blueprint for Maryland's future, the Board of Education has concurred with this appointment.
And this must be something that both this council and the board must agree on.
Yes, so, so the current law requires the appointment of an implementation coordinator, and at this point in time, the superintendent of schools made recommendations to the Board of Education to appoint an existing, well-qualified employee to set the foundation or groundwork for this important effort, and Dr. Einhorn is believed to be the right person for that job, and so the Board of Education did approve that, but it does require concurrence from the county council by action. I'll make the motion, Ms. Brown.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion in a second. Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right. Thank you, counsel. I'm going to bring your airport manager up now, and he has about three items of business for you. The first one is a request from the Eastern Airport to apply and accept grant funding from the Maryland Aviation Administration for Phase Two of the obstruction removal program at Eastern Airport in the amount of $293,721.09. And he's going to go over that with you, and he'll answer any questions for you. So, Micah, welcome.
Thank you, Clay. Counsel, good evening.
Welcome, Micah.
So Phase Two is upon us. We are moving through our obstruction removal program that started back in 2017. This year, the, the bulk of the work is actually going to be on airport, removing about five to six acres worth of trees that are on the east side of runway 422. We did this about 12 or 13 years ago, we just, just cut them down once, we're actually going to, you know, we're going to actually remove that area and turn it into meadow this year, and all this is obviously in preparation for the, the safety improvements at the airport. There's also two more residential parcels that are on Hazelwood, and there are some properties on Commerce and Brook's Drive that we will remove the obstructions on this year as well. We don't have all of the, there's a few moving pieces with some of the properties that we're still, you know, trying to get the final approval, but we did bid the project. Every property was bid as, as a phase, so it could be pulled out if we don't have the approval before construction time. So, so we, we got the grant amount from the MAA for the $293,000. The entire cost of the project came in well under budget at $391,000 and some change. I, I put $550,000 into the budget this year to cover it, so under budget, and the actual cost to the airport to do this project is going to be $142,000, once we get the 75% reimbursement from the state.
I will make a motion to accept the grant funding from the MAA for Phase Two.
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, Madam Secretary, we've got a motion in a second. Could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right.
Okay.
So, Micah's number two item is he's going to be recommending award of bid 2101 runway 422 and runway 11533 obstruction removal, so I'm going to hand that out to you as well.
Yes, so, so like I said, we already bid this, so the, the grant that we just voted on, this is what that'll be paying for. Since we, we, we had everything lined up to where we can get the grant, we had the, you know, we have the contractor lined up, so we would like to go ahead and award that to them as well, so we can go ahead and start planning for construction in September.
Well, I will then also make a motion to recommend the award of bid number 2101 in the amount of $391,000 and some change.
I'll second.
Here we have a motion in a second. Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right. And finally, Micah's going to ask your approval to award price proposal for professional engineering and construction phase services for obstruction removal phase two Eastern[1709.00] and construction phase services for obstruction removal phase two Eastern Airport.
And this is for our AECOM project manager to oversee the project and make sure all the work's being done to our specifications. And just to note that $44,000 price tag is included in that total cost of the $142,000.
I'll make a motion to accept AECOM's price proposal of $44,746.
Thank you, Ms. Price.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. DeVilleo. Madam Secretary.
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo.
Aye.
Mr. Lesher.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Mr. Pack.
All right.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, good job.
Thank you.
The last item that I had, Mr. Council President, for the council is, you know, we should always take the opportunity to recognize the great work of our staff and certainly your leadership as well. I just want to take a minute and talk about the last six months. It's been a busy six months. It's the departure of our long-serving county manager, Andy Hollis, and the replacement of some very senior leadership. So I've shaped these items, I want to talk about around this people, projects, and process strategy that I talk about. And other people, we've been working very hard to bring in and recruit key individuals in senior leadership positions. And I'm just so pleased, and I know you are as well. You saw David Edwards, who's leading our HR efforts. We were very fortunate to get ahold of him and have him onboard. We have Joy Nangle, who's here with us, and we are so fortunate to have you here as a Talbot County resident and bringing just, you know, years of experience to bear to fill Angela's shoes. As well, we have Patrick Thomas here, who's doing the yeoman's work, as you know. And then I would, you know, like to report that we are very close to filling the shoes of your DES Director, Emergency Services Director, so more to come on that. Happy to report that you stepped up at the call of the voters and implemented the LEOPS program for deputy sheriffs as a significant effort for recruitment retention. That's going to help Sheriff Gamble better police our county. And in our emergency medical services system, we are adding four additional employees to give 12 hours of coverage seven days a week for that necessary coverage of the north end, and they are embarking upon an effort to build a station in the north end of the county, which is very exciting, in efforts to move forward in that area. As far as projects, I'm happy to report that the DES crew, Tommy Haddaway, Brian McCates, Holly Guskey, have worked with the team down there and implemented a next-generation new 911 telephone system. You know, while we're all doing our work, this is going on behind the scenes, but now with U911, there are new features and new capabilities that have been put in place with this new phone system that helps these communications specialists see where people are and get help to them quickly. And so this was accomplished in the last six months. Our Public Works Department, under Ray Clark, implemented with your approval a solid waste management plan, which is a significant task, and I'm proud of that. Our Roads Department is busy paving roads. Matter of fact, if you go out to Chapel Road tomorrow, you'll see some great work there. And just as a side note, and I think we're going to ask our public relations team to put out an article out on this, but the cost for our roads team to do the mileage of paving on that job is just so much different than what we would have to pay if we'd bid it out.
Oh, right.
I was biking Chapel just the other day.
Yeah.
Smooth, even, well done.
Yeah, and they are so proud of the work, and they need to be recognized for it. So we are going to do an article on that. And in far as communication, we have updated our website. We're working diligently in the area of cybersecurity so that we don't become one of those organizations that, you know, make the front page of the paper because of an attack. Under processes, we have implemented this learning management system that we just talked about that's exciting. We have high hopes for that to improve overall training for employees. Customer service and the planning and zoning department working with Miguel and his team. I think Miguel probably stepped out.
Yep.
And we're embarking on a strategic planning effort to not only take internal stakeholders, but also users, and really strip that department down and look at what we're doing and find out ways we can simplify and expedite, you know, services to the public. Grant support, we have to recognize our Finance Office, Cassandra and a team, Cory Taffey were part of that team, continue to push out grant dollars as we continue to battle this pandemic and its effect on the community. And then finally, just have to recognize the Emergency Operations Center team, who held numerous calls to facilitate coordination in our community with regard to the pandemic, and continues to do so with a little bit of work on the grant side. And then finally, just a reminder that we still are in a vaccination race to immunity against a stubborn COVID virus and its variants. So again, reminding the public that is listening, please encourage people to get a vaccination. That is our one offensive move that can really make a difference. And that concludes the county manager report. Thank you, Mr. Council President.
Thank you, Mr. County Manager. Does council like to comment on this?
Well, now, I would just, one thing, Miguel stepped out, but you were talking about the senior man, the senior team that we put in place. Miguel was also included in that when he took over for Mary Kay as planning officer, so I just wanted to just give him a shout out as well. But I think you hit on some great points on this, Clay, the way you went through it, touching on various items in various departments, things that we're doing and things we're moving forward at doing. I will say to the one and his team, I saw the truck sitting up there, and when I got on that part of Chapel Road, I was very, very pleased. My knees thank you for that job.
I'll convey that to him personally tomorrow morning. He wants to drive me somewhere in the county and show me something.
Be careful when you get in the truck, yes.
Actually, I'll have him ride in. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pack. Ms. Price, good?
Yep, good.
Okay. Mr. Vice President?
Nothing further, thank you, Bill.
So, the only thing you didn't say is your position, okay? And you're, you know, you're laying low, but we appreciate your leadership. You're the one, and your team, you and Jess and all the people that are behind the scenes putting all this together, so we really appreciate the leadership of you guys, too.
Thank you. We do have an amazing team collectively. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I appreciate that, everybody. Okay, so we're going to move to public comments, and Mr. Vice President, would you mind reading the public comment and sort of the rules, please? There you go.
I forgot to have the rules.
That's okay.
Public comment is an opportunity for members of the public in attendance to address the council regarding any county matter. Any member of the public desiring to be heard by the council shall raise their hand and wait to be recognized by the council president. Once recognized, the person shall state their name and address, and then direct their comments to the council as a body, not to individual council members or other members of the public. Each speaker shall be permitted to speak no more than three minutes. Those speaking on behalf of an organization shall be given up to five minutes unless otherwise authorized by the council president. Speakers are expected to be courteous and respectful. Personal, impertinent, or slanderous comments shall not be tolerated. We have four names submitted. I understand that the first one has departed, Brandon Little.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
And if that is the case, we can move on to the second name, which is Ken Eaton.
Steven Hunter, I'm coming on the head of the organization.
Okay, all right, guys, come on up.
Are you sharing your time or doing it separately?
Oh, we're sharing our time. We're here for five minutes to represent our group.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. You don't mind, if you don't mind introducing yourself and where you're from, please? That'd be great.
Steven Hunter, Eastern, Maryland.
Ken Eaton, Queen Anne, Maryland.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Mr. Callahan, members of the council, we are representing a group, the Union Talbot Boys. I came before you two weeks ago to introduce our intentions, and we are here to follow up with more details. Ken will leave a packet with the county manager that will have information to give to all of you. Before we get going, I'd like to tell you a little bit about the two of us, so we're not strangers to any of you. We're Eastern kids. We've known each other since we were little boys. Our families attended the Presbyterian Church on Washington Street together. For those who are not familiar with that church, a former councilman, Phil Foster's father, was the first pastor of that church and was extremely instrumental in putting that thing on the map and serving our community, so hats off to him and his family. That church is where both of us became Boy Scouts. I'm proud to say that we had great leadership there in Boy Scouts that helped my brother, Doug, become an Eagle Scout. I'm also proud to say that Kenny's an Eagle Scout. I still call him Kenny because that's what he was. Now, I will tell you about myself. I never made it to the rank of Eagle Scout, but I painted a lot of Eastern's fire hydrants helping Ken with his eagle project, so if you don't like the color of the green on the fire hydrants, you can thank the two of us, and maybe we'll change them someday. For those of us who do not know about the background of what we're here to talk about tonight, the Union Talbot Boys has been talked about for quite some time. It's a discussion that started nearly 110 years ago, yet nothing has ever been done about it. It's just been talked about. For a little bit of background on the history of it, 1913 remaining Civil War veterans of Talbot County who were still alive at the time agreed to place two monuments on the courthouse lawn in honor of those who served in the Civil War, one Confederate, one Union. While there have been theories tossed around about why the monument for the Union group was never placed, these sidelined conversations today just don't matter to us. What matters to us is to do the right thing by the men who fought for the Union, the Union Talbot Boys. From our observations over the past 20 years or so, we feel the reason that a Union monument is not already in place is simply because no person or group has ever really come to the council with a plan and a desire to make it happen. There have been many ideas floated, but ideas are just that, ideas. We want to make something happen. The project we are presenting is a complete package, and we'll need no funding from the county. It will be accomplished by fundraising. We are confident that the project will get funded. Ken has prepared a site plan that shows everything in front of the courthouse as it stands now, with the addition of the Union Talbot Boys Monument, a historic walkway, and information plaques. I want to be very clear, everything in our plan is in scale with what is already out there on the lawn. We have an artist rendition of the monument depicting two soldiers. Why two? Talbot County had a lot of United States colored troops who served the Union, and while 18 of those men are honored in Unionville, there are many more soldiers who served, and it is time to honor these men. It is way past time. I want you to know that Ken here has spent many, many hours on this project so far, and I cannot thank him enough. He has met with several project partners to get to where we are now, which is point-blank ready to go. What Ken is about to share is an outline of some important tales, details of what we've done so far, so I'm going to turn it over to Ken to fill in a lot of the blanks for you.
By the way, we painted those fire hydrants in 1982, so don't blame us for the color. We've coordinated this design with William B. Sipple and Son. They're a local stone and monument supplier. We've also coordinated with Terry Jones, a rather renowned sculptor from Pennsylvania. He is the artist for the Moment of Mercy Monument that is located in front of the National Civil War Museum in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. We've also discussed this with Bill Wentz, who is a well-recommended installation contractor for monuments and sculptures. The stone would be provided by Rock of Ages in Vermont, and the reason we reached out to all these team members is to provide good, high-quality materials and workmanship for this, and we hope it lasts a lifetime. In addition, we've added the walkways and informational plaques to assist in telling the story of Talbot County, mainly because throughout many of the wars and conflicts from over the years, that's part of Talbot's story. We already have a Vietnam War memorial, Fallen Harris Memorial. The Union Talbot Boys would add the Talbot Boys, the Frederick Douglass Monument. All that would provide the missing piece to the story.
A question, though. There's two of them. Can we give them the extra three, five, and three, or not?
I don't, Steven may have a few more words.
We're almost wrapped up. We might need a minute if that is okay with everyone. A second monument is simply long overdue. It's been talked about, and talked about, and talked about, and nothing's been done. We want to take action, okay? It was the intent of our ancestors, and it is our intent now. And other than waiting for the results of the lawsuit that's been filed against the county, I ask you, the council, what can you tell us that can either enable us to move forward now or not? We'd like some direction.
Okay, sounds very good.
If appropriate, I could give copies to Mr. Stamp, and he could get that to the council.
That would be great.
What would be the next step, or what would be the direction?
So, the way this works, this is public comment, okay?
Yes, sir.
And this is your time to tell us what your plan is. We'll take a look at your plan, and, you know, we'll be in touch if council wants to pursue this.
Very good.
Okay?
Thank you, everyone. And as I said, and last time I appeared before you, I appreciate what all of you have done, especially through the hard time of the past year.
I appreciate it, too, guys.
Everybody have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, you, too.
Next is Sarah Kilman of Eastern, Maryland.
Hi, guys.
How are you?
My name's Sarah. Currently, Eastern, Maryland. Today, I'd like to make a comment about Talbot Boys statue.
You can sit.
If it's okay, I'd like to stand.
You sure?
I think better when I'm standing.
Okay, okay, whatever's comfortable.
Of course.
Yep.
So, I grew up in Talbot County. Some of you may know me. I think I've met Mr. Pack. Back in high school, I hosted a mock debate about public education, I believe, and the vice principal made sure I invited people from both sides of the aisle, so I invited Mr. Pack to come and join. But for the last few years, I've been living in Richmond, Virginia. Very different than Talbot County, for sure. Last year, I witnessed what a movement can do. Despite civilians being scared of further safety and their personal protections from COVID-19, thousands continue to go out on the streets every day and show the city's leadership that the Confederate statues on Monument Avenue needed to come down. In their case, just like this one, the council refused, or at least pushed off, making a decision on removing those monuments. It actually came down to the Richmond mayor, facing pressure and upcoming elections, to step up. He did step up. Those monuments, most of them, have come down. And real legislation, that being things that can make a true impact on our county, started to take its place and continue to do so today in Virginia. Council, Richmond was the capital of the Confederacy for almost the entire Civil War. They were able to come together last year, one way or another, to remove multiple symbols of hate from one of their busiest streets. I don't want Talbot County in the national news for refusing to recognize Talbot Boys as what it is, or worse, knowing exactly what it is and what it can stand for and failing to remove it from our courthouse lawn. I want Talbot County to be known for being welcome to everyone, to being committed through legislation on doing better on racial injustice, equity work, and diversity inclusion. We won't get there until the statue comes down. I ask the council to take this step forward and do whatever it needs to be done to remove the statue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Those are all the names that we have signed up in advance.
Okay. Mr. Yelling?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I will say something just briefly.
Yeah, if you don't mind, come on up, come on up and say who you are and where you live at, please. I appreciate it.
Council members, thank you. My name is Kenny Miller. I'm a new resident of Talbot County as of this past September. I live here in Eastern. My grandkids are here, and I just wanted to thank the leadership that you all provided, that I've been able to witness. This is my first meeting, and it's really been a pleasure to retire here, and what you've done with the schoolchildren under extremely difficult circumstances, and we've been there trying to figure out their tablets and, you know, making the day go. This is just a tremendous place, and I love it, and I want to thank you, and that's it.
I appreciate that kind words, Mr. Miller. Thank you. And I'm glad you moved here.
So as he steps back, I just have to recognize his commitment to state government. Kenny actually was the governor's lead for GIS, and did a lot of work on things we did with communications interoperability, data sharing, and it's great to have him as a valuable member, a retired member of our community. So he might be, you know, inclined to help us somehow on boards and commissions, so great to have him here.
Yep. Just want to recognize. Yep, he's really, he's kind of screwed up now since we know him, you know what I mean? So, yeah, yeah.
You know that, like, Vegas.
You're automatically on a board somewhere. Now, I appreciate it, and thanks a lot for coming up here and talking to us. Okay. I think we're down to us. Council comments. Council comments, okay? You want to start us off, Mr. Vice President?
Sure.
Yep.
I just want to thank the organizers of the rally on the courthouse square last Saturday, and for the Talbot County Sheriff, Joe Gamble, and his team in coordinating, along with the Eastern Town Police, all of the security for the event. They kept the proceedings, the organizers, that is, and the law enforcement kept the proceedings and the crowd peaceful and civil, as befits the public function of the square. I thought, by my in-expert estimate, I'm not very good at these things, perhaps 400 participants. My compliments in particular go to MC Vicky Wilson for setting an appropriate tone and keeping things moving, to Easton native Jalen Moni, who joined from our senator's office, and for the inspiring music sung by the Friends of Christ singers. Thank you all for your work.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Mrs. Price?
I have nothing further to... We're going to have a nice short meeting tonight, so, you know, thankful for that.
Mr. Pack over there.
Thank you, Ms. Callahan.
Yeah, no problem.
I did attend the beginning of the march, the parade, but I got stuck behind it. On Saturday, wasn't able to stay for the whole thing, but I will consider what Mr. Leisher said. The organizers need to be given their due for putting together a very peaceful, organized, at least from what I saw at the beginning. I was out at the Coe store, and my wife and I had a chance to go over and be with them as they started assembling and getting themselves together. So, and that's what you want to see. You want to see the First Amendment rights being exercised. You want to see it being exercised in a peaceful, respectful manner. And I'm glad to hear that everything went well after I had to depart and go up to Delaware. I wasn't with you guys on the last time we met. I was down at St. Michael's, sweltering in the heat at the graduation down there at St. Michael's, and was glad, I was happy to be invited to attend that graduation ceremony and the night before. Mr. Callahan, Mr. Leisher also attended with me at the Eastern High School graduation in the hot, hot sun. So I went from the staggering sun to just oppressive heat and humidity down in St. Michael's. Other than that, I also had the opportunity to go out to the Chesapeake Children's Book Festival on June the 12th. I was actually introduced, one of our local authors, Brian Cowyer. Well, he's down in Pokemok City, now lives in New York. He's written a number of children's books. Then I had the opportunity to meet Brian and listen to some of his readings as he read to his children, and my grandson flipped around, I don't know what he was doing, but anyway. I want to get a plug very, very quickly to our COVID team. I think the last count was 571 days. I know I'm looking at you, you're looking back at me like, don't do that. But the team was together. Do you remember just 570?
Four hundred and seventy.
Four hundred and seventy. Okay, I added 100, another 100 days. Yeah, seems like it, right. I just want to just tip my hat to Geneva, and to Nancy, and to Dr. McGuire, and to everyone that endured the 470-some-odd days. We dis suspend the COVID monthly meetings for now. Hopefully, we won't have to kick those back off again. The Equity Task Force is still meeting every other week right now with Nancy Andrews, and her team, and Dr. McGuire, to make sure that we keep on emphasizing to people the importance to please get vaccinated, please get vaccinated. I know you go home at night, you see the news, and you hear we had zero deaths and zero new cases here in Maryland, and you think, oh, man, we're out of it, we're done, we're good. We're not. Don't fall for that. Please do your part. If everyone in your home has been vaccinated and you have not, you know, you can still catch this deadly disease and bring it back home, you know? And so we're asking everyone to please continue to do your part and get vaccinated. I know all of us have. That's why we're up here, that's why we're saying to our family, to our loved ones, to do so. Look, I had to go with one of my loved ones over the weekend who had not been vaccinated yet, and I'm like, what's wrong with you? So, anyway, but please do your part and get vaccinated. We're urging anyone to do that. With that, Ms. Callahan, good to be back. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pack. Mr. DeVio?
So obviously, I'm jaded as a son of a teacher, and with my children in the elementary school, I see the value of our educators. And, you know, when you're out in town and you see one of them, that little child's running up to saying how much she made a difference in my life, and how much I appreciate you, and how much I care, and I wish that you, or if they're in third grade and they want them to be their fourth-grade teacher, I know that that's a great feeling, because I've seen it in my mother's eyes and felt it through her. So the other night, when I attended the two-gen graduation at the Neighborhood Service Center, I want to give a plug to Mr. Pack, who's been leading that. And there was one individual who was in there that graduated and immediately asked if he could attend the next group of classes. He saw the value in it and appreciated the work that Mr. Pack put into it. And as Joe Gamble says, we're all a spoke in the wheel. And I want to thank Mr. Pack for putting that together, for organizing it and running it so well that they want to stay and continue through it. It's a great program, and I think that proves the success to it. So thank you very much, Mr. Pack.
And on that note, Mr. DeVio, I want to extend thanks to your dad, Dr. DeVio, for coming down to St. Michael's. Chief Smith put on a vent last Saturday that I was able to go down, along with the community center down in St. Michael's. We did a vaccination clinic inside of the church there, Union United Methodist Church, and your dad came down and did some of those vaccinations. Well, I did all the vaccinations, not some, we did all the vaccinations. And we were able to get nine people vaccinated. So we know right now, boots on the ground, we're not going to get the 100 and so people coming through the doors anymore, and Clay knows this, we're going to have to knock on doors one at a time. So we were able to get nine people vaccinated, and thank your dad for us, please.
And I certainly will let him know. Thank you.
Okay, and I guess I'll end it with a couple things. So I just want to thank the community. Saturday was a big deal. They got to express their feelings and thoughts, and that's what it's all about. And I really appreciate all the security and the police and everybody that was involved in it, and it turned out great. And that's, that right there is just showing that the community can come together and be peaceful, and that's what it's all about. The other great thing is tonight is, Mr. Stamp said, our accomplishments for the last six months. And we're going to do that every six months, because this council is accomplishing a lot, and we're going to. We're there to serve the community. We kid around a lot a bit about, you know, tonight about the sewer and everything, but the ultimate goal is to get people on sewer. That's what's going to make things better, that's what's going to make the environment better, and it's a big deal. So I just want to, I just want to comment, all the employees that work for us, all the hard work, you know, they're out in the field, they're out in the roads, they're out doing all this stuff, the staff. You know, we have, you know, like you were saying, 287 full-time employees, and I think we have a couple hundred part-time. So we've got a good team, and we're blessed to have them. And now that we have some leaders in some of these departments, we've got really good things happening here. And, you know, Mr. Stamp, you're leading that team, too, and I appreciate your leadership on all that, and it's been, you know, when you're starting from people sort of somewhat, in a sense, jumping out of the boat, and now that we've done filled the boat up with phenomenal people, you know, it's a big deal and a big accomplishment to us as a council and you as a leader of your new position, too. So, and I really appreciate it. So I'll end it with that. Mr. Vice President, would you mind wrapping things up here?
The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, July 13th, beginning at 6:00 PM. The council will be convening in open session at 4:30 PM and immediately adjourning into closed session to discuss real estate, legal, and personnel matters as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. On Monday, July 12th, beginning at 5:30 PM, the county council will be meeting with the Eastern Town Council to discuss Eastern Point. That work session will be held here in the Bradley Meeting Room. So with that, motion to adjourn would be in order.
Okay. Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Need a motion first.
I'll say.
Okay. All right. And what you do?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Leisher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye. Thank you, Council.